The school, there's a whole process of procedure. Every year, part of that law requires that we do what's called a self-assessment of what we do. So what are our procedures and policies in place? And each year, this time of year, we have to present to the public and the board on where we're at with our self-assessment. So again, this is where we see ourselves. The state does review this and then they make an official later on in the year. So some of the eight elements that we are graded on are like the programming for HIV, training on board education approved policies, staff instruction and training, curriculum instruction on HIV prevention as character of ed and social emotional learning, HIV personnel, school level incident reporting, investigation procedures and HIV reporting. From our self-assessment, we scored ourselves at Lakeview seventy-five out of seventy-eight, at River View seventy-six out of seventy-eight, and at Valley View seventy-six out of seventy-eight. Here's the process. It is reviewed by the district staff first, and then it's self-scored. And there's a team that reviews it. It's not just one person. It's the HIV team. So they review it, then it's self-scored, and then it's presented to the Board of Education. Then it's reviewed and approved by the Board of Education, by the New Jersey Department of Education. And then it gets posted on our district website. That usually takes, it's usually more like spring by the time the county, the state comes out and says, yes, this is acceptable, and then we post it on our website. Any questions from the board on that?
Thank you, Mr. Forte. We will move on to Dr. Cullis. She's going to present our New Jersey SLA two thousand eighteen nineteen test results.
Good evening, everyone. This is our seventh annual state assessment presentation. As you know, last year, it switched from HARP to NJSLA. So although the numbers you see today are being compared apples to apples, we're not exactly, because the test was slightly different, the length of the test was different, and the initial test was over every standard, and then this year's test was select standard. So it was slightly different. However, we can't draw comparisons because the test questions were in the same format in both the math and the ELA. So you're going to get a lot of data up here first. It's just a comparison year over year of the number of students in each of the categories, not meeting the proficiencies all the way up to exceeding the proficiencies of the overall last columns, the overall proficiencies. The arrows that I have indicated up there are just comparing particular cohorts. So if you look at the group of students in two thousand eighteen that was in grade three, and they had eighty-three percent proficient, and then look, you just do a comparison. If you go down to two thousand nineteen as fourth graders, that would really be the closest comparison that you can make because it is the same students. You can also look at it grade over grade. We like to see trends. If there's consistently third grade students are not making benchmarks or are making benchmarks, we look at those trends as well. And then we also do follow the cohorts to see in particular students, how do they trend over the third grade through eighth grade years span. The other part up here, we did see in the fourth grade cohort, two thousand eighteen, eighty-six percent, well, that went to ninety percent. So that particular group went up in ELA. Same type of comparison, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. You can look, follow the cohorts in sixth grade. Those students were at seventy-eight percent proficient, and in seventh grader, they were at eighty-five percent. The seventh grade cohort were ninety, and then slightly down as eighth graders, eighty-eight, but fairly consistent. For math, same year-over-year comparison, a few things that I wanted to point out. So if you noticed one of the groups, so for the fourth grade group, the overall proficiency, we have pretty much the same. I just wanted to know if you look at the number of students. We lost a few students who went from one twenty to one, uh, one twenty-two to one twenty, stating about seventy percent proficient. If I look at particularly the number of students that were in the exceeding expectations, we have fourteen percent, and then doubled that by the time that they were in fifth grade. So it was nice to see that not only were students moving, or in generally, were staying the same as number of students proficient. However, fewer were fours and more moved into the five category. For our sixth and seventh grade. So sixth grade math is the last year that all of our students take the same assessment. Once we get into seventh grade, we, some of our students start taking high school courses. So the seventh grade group consists of one group that's taking Algebra One, and then the other seventy-five percent are taking seventh grade math. By the time they get to eighth grade math, we have about a hundred students who are taking either Algebra or Geometry. So we have, they are no longer taking the grade level assessment. So the numbers do change, and that's why I also put up the number of students that take the assessment. So you can see on the FAR, we have two hundred and seventeen in sixth grade, but then at seventh grade, there's only, what, a hundred and eighty-five students at that grade. It's because those students are now, we lose those students, but now they're in Algebra One. And I thought it was interesting that the proficiency difference was exactly the number of students that was different between the number of students taking Algebra One and not taking Algebra One. So in sixth grade math, sixty-two percent overall, and then that moved to sixty. But again, it's not the same as, still the same students. And here's our eighth grade, and then again, the algebra, the two high school courses. So there are not that many students in comparison that are taking the eighth grade compared to the other years. So in the far left column, we had ninety-two students out of the entire grade taking just regular core eighth grade level math. And then we had a number of students taking Algebra One, and then Geometry, which improved to eighty-four, or sixty, or in that grade, and twenty-seven in Geometry. So we have a number of students there. I do want to point out, the circled area, the highlight of our math scores, is really the percentage of students that are taking Algebra One. Ninety-one percent of them are proficient, and that is in comparison to the state average of forty-three percent that are proficient. So it's a huge significant difference in the number of our, percentage of our students that are passing this assessment compared to the rest of the state. We have one main subgroup in Demville, and that is our students with disabilities. So we do look at comparing those students and how they're performing with our students that do not have IDPs. And we like to see how is that gap closing? Ideally, what we should see is that the percentages of students with IDPs and without are getting closer together. And this year, we did see significant gains in this area, where in general, we may have eighty percent of our students without IDPs proficient, and we're seeing students with IDPs at sixty percent. This is a huge difference. Just last year, in math, we only had twenty-six percent of our students with IDPs proficient. This year, we have forty-four percent overall, but in some grades, we have moved it all the way up to sixty percent. So you can see that gap is really starting to close, working very hard at making sure that those students are giving everything that they need and learning in the style and with the combinations that they need to show how proficient they are. And it's great to see that we are even seeing students in the exceeding expectations, even though they do have some learning disabilities. We are able to accommodate those and give them the opportunity to show us what they know in a way that's best for that. Keep moving on to the ELA and math. Thank you. So this is showing that. So math, in comparison to math ELA, our math score percentages are lower than our ELA. We've really significantly improved. About five years ago, we were really in the sixty and seventy percent. And for most grade levels, we're in the eighties and nineties for ELA. We're starting to move that way in math. We're getting up into the seventies and eighties. So we're moving in that direction, but we're not quite at that same place as we work with ELA. What we are seeing, math is really where we're seeing that close for students with disabilities. Just some notes, some specific things that came out of this data. So the state provides us an enormous amount of information on every student, every grade level, every teacher, the school as a whole, the district as a whole. And we really break it down to see what specifically can we work on in the classroom? What can we work on as a school? What can we work on as a district? To start to close those gaps for students that aren't performing, and to make sure that all students are reaching their potential. A few highlights that I want to note. So grade four cohort at River View improved from eighty-two percent in two thousand eighteen to ninety-one percent proficient in two thousand nineteen. So that group had a significant nine percent improvement. It's the same students, and really moved their skills. Also, the fourth grade same level of students had seventy-six percent proficient in math and moved to eighty-two percent. So that group of students really did start to move up. Our grade seven homework was seventy-six proficient, seventy-six percent proficient in two thousand eighteen, and eighty-five percent proficient in two thousand nineteen. So that group is moving. Our ELA across the district, fifth and seventh grade, were holding at eighty-nine percent to ninety percent. So that was a highlight. Grade eight math increased its proficiency. It was low. It was at thirty-three percent last year, and we did move into forty-six percent this year. So we are definitely moving in the right direction. Again, that's eighth grade, who are not taking any of the high school courses. We had eighty-four students who took Algebra One. That was ninety-seven percent proficient. I did mention in comparison to the state average of forty-three. Proficiency percentage gap between the students with IDPs and without is closing. And I did want to make that exact note. So we were, again, twenty-six percent were passing math last year and forty-four percent this year. So the particular students did move. Areas of growth. So we still have definite areas. We get the initial data in the summer, so we started doing our work at that point. What are we going to be working on next year? All of the information for the next teacher that student is prepared. What skills do they still not know? What skills were they exceeding in and need to be pushed in? So we have that all ready for the teachers when they get here. And this is our first of two public presentations. The first presentation is just our district, and then we get comparison data from the rest of the state and also cohorts of districts that are similar to us. And that gives us a lot of information about how we're actually doing. You know, how compared to everybody else, you know, where do we rank? Are, or is that, are those proficiencies where they need to be, or are we lagging behind? So if that next presentation comes, then usually January or February, we'll get that data. We're working on, we're working on our sixth to eighth grade math because we're still below seventy percent in our core math classes. We still have work to do there. Same with the eighth grade. Even though it is a success, it's still only forty-six percent proficient, and we have, we have work to do there. Our special education subgroups continue to close the gaps, but there is still a gap. And our consistency in math scores, making sure that every grade level, students proficient in one grade level, they should be proficient at the next grade level. That we are moving them all the way through the system in both elementary schools and into, on into middle school. And they are consistently, no matter what teacher they have or what grade level they're in, proficient on those math skills. So that's an area to work on. We are doing many things, and I'm not going to touch on all of them, but I'm just going to mention a few. So these are all the things we put in place to prepare for those areas of growth. And a few that I will mention. One of them is our Math Matters Initiative. We put it into place where we have parent and community volunteers coming in for our classrooms to share how we use math in our everyday life, whether it's work or in the home. We've already had our first presenter in the elementary school went very well. And we have, we're trying for eighty or more presentations this year. So we do have a number of parents who have signed up to come in and really work with our students and show them how math is used everywhere. Today, we had a workshop for our third through fifth grade math staff called Math the Day for the Math We Need Tomorrow. So it's really looking at the way that students are learning. So teachers actually went and put themselves into the students' seat and went through it as if they were the student, learning with manipulatives. How is this concept being explained? And in the second half of the day, taking it as the teacher, now how do you explain that to the students? So it's been a long time for many of us to go back to our college or high school math, and definitely our elementary math experiences. So we really need to take that opportunity to say, how do our students learn today? What do they like, and how do they need to use manipulatives? And look at the concepts, how do they go through that? I'll point out the supplemental assessment Freckle Math Program. We purchased third through eighth grade. She says the third all the way through eighth grade. And we're using that to target which skills that they, students know, which they don't know. So of the five math, there's five math domains, and of those five domains, Geometry and Numerical Operations, we look to see what grade level they are on in each of those individual areas. So a student may be on grade level in one, and way above in the next domain, and below in another domain. So that as teachers, we know exactly how to target which area for that student to make sure that they are on. So it's a fantastic program. And there's a whole list there that you can see. And with the last one, which is our Tiered System of Supports, which is, used to be our Intervention and Referral System, but now we have revamped that to really give an opportunity for students to have one more pathway of assistance before we get to looking at special education programs. And that is new this year and existed, but it's a saga monopoly. Our supervisor, Student Services, has worked very hard on that program, and we started that this year. She's also our assistant principal at River View. So we thank her for that. Any questions?
Dr. Cullis?
Yes?
Do you see, do you see seventh graders and eighth graders a lot more enrolling in accelerated math programs resulting in sort of skewed numbers on eighth grade math versus algebra or geometry?
In the high school accelerated or the ones that are in our accelerated programs?
Okay, they are.
We are consistently around a hundred in Algebra. We're seeming to have one section as seventh graders. Math puts them as one section in Geometry, and two sections in Algebra as eighth graders. So consistently, we have about the same number of students in those programs, and it seems that that number is working. You know, we do look at, we have to look very carefully to make sure we're not placing students in those programs too early, because we don't want to affect where they're going to be. Some of those students are entering high school with two honors high school courses completed. So they're starting as a freshman in Algebra II, and then go to Precal, Cal, AP. And for some of those students, they're not quite ready for that. So I think that at one point, we had everybody, this actually might have been about eight years ago, everybody try Algebra. And that system, the state was looking at, can everybody do Algebra in eighth grade? And it was determined that that was not a good fit for the state and for Demville either. So I think those numbers will stay pretty consistent, about a hundred.
Dr. Cullis, you mentioned the term proficient. That's what made sure I understand correctly. Is that mean expectations level four?
Correct.
Okay.
So proficient is a four or a five?
Got it. And then, I know we look at the Students with Disabilities subgroup. Obviously, those are then incorporated in the total numbers you put up initially, correct?
I did not. In this, I did last year. This year, I took them out. So you could see, I wanted to direct comparison so that I could see how close is the gap? Because is that student being counted twice if they're in the subgroup or not? So they're not, yeah, they're not interested?
I was going to say, I did do that. If you look at the students that are outside of that subgroup, it sounds like you're.
I did. That's what those numbers reflect, is how many do not have an IP and how many do. So we can see how close are they getting. Ideally, we, and this isn't great news that students got ones, but statistically, there's one student with an IP that has a one, and one student who doesn't have an IP with a one. That's better in looking at, our program is at least consistently meeting equity. You know, that students are equally being looked at. We don't want anyone in ones, and there shouldn't be anyone in ones. But if we see students down there, we certainly don't want only one subgroup to be all, and ones, twos, and then the other subgroup, or the other main group, up in force in fives. That's a problem. So it's nice that we're seeing students that get fives, that have IDPs and don't. We have students with fours with IDPs and don't, so. Thank you. Cheers, Georgia State!
All right. Thank you. That concludes our special presentations. For those of you interested in our future special presentation schedules, at our next meeting, we have our two thousand eighteen nineteen audit presentation. That's the auditorium.
So it will be presented in progress. The session will have a base of information, but we'll be open to that. But if there is a number of examples that change, we'll be able to present.
Always waiting for the state to be caught up to Demville. We'll also have River View Elementary School staff presentation, so we look forward to that. And then followed by our December twenty-fifth Lakeview Elementary School staff presentation. And then our December ninth, we'll have Valley View Middle School staff presentation. So this concludes our special presentation for tonight. Now we'll move on to superintendent comments.
Okay, only two comments tonight. First thing is our River View East West Campus presentations will be, are set. The first one is at River View during PTA meeting on October sixteenth. That's this Wednesday, six PM. The public can find you to that. We will have central office staff and school district staff and school staff there as well. And our second one is on October twenty-third at one PM in this room. So if anybody can't make the night meeting, the following afternoon, we have one as well. They'll be the same presentation all times. They will be, they both will be recorded, and both will be placed on the, posted on our website in case people cannot go and at least watch them. And the last thing is the GAF outing from the Foundation of Democrat Demvilles Success, where the foundation donated ten thousand dollars for a school and thirty thousand dollar donation to the, to the Democrat Public Schools. That's something that's been going on for years. And the foundation has donated upwards of four hundred thousand dollars for schools over the last ten years? Ten-ish years? Eleven years. That's it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Forte. And I would also add that the presentation of the sixteenth and the twenty-third, in addition, we obviously have board meetings that the public can come to, correct? As well as if there's any questions outside of those, they can certainly refer to, like Mr. Forte is probably the best one to answer those questions. They certainly create anybody on the board that they've got questions or comments with regards to kind of our process with that. Thank you, Mr. Forte. And Dr. Cullis, any assistant superintendent comments?
I just wanted to again congratulate each of the three schools, Valley View, River View, and Lakeview, for all receiving the bronze certification for future ready schools. And that award will be given out next week at the school boards convention. And we'll be asking those teams to come and receive the award here at my future school party. This concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Cullis. Maris, any business manager comments?
We said it all. The other children will be sent to next week. I'm sorry, I'm telling you. But I'm sure we can discuss if the school finishes with financial position and increase our organization by a pound fifty percent next year.
Okay, great. You've done that. Appreciate it. It is now eight-ten, and I'm hoping for our first public comment section. You will accept any public comments with anything to do with district. No need to be just agenda items only. And if you'd like to make a comment, ask, if you come up, you sign in for the record. You state your name and address below the record on the, on the camera. Do you have the microphone?
I leave it to, sorry.
Okay, okay. You have a microphone, just so when you're recorded, you could be on tape, so when you post it, it can be heard. Anybody have any comments, you can come on up to my phone.
Thank you. So yeah, my name is Noah Jilly. I live at fifteen Richwood Place. Relatively new resident. I moved here over three years ago. My wife was talking to me the other night. She saw something on the Facebook group that there might be some dealings with the archdiocese as far as renting space for the elementary school kids. So I just wanted to see if there could be some light shed on that. Because based on some thinking that I did, I think there might be some better options, hopefully. But I wanted to see first maybe a statement about it.
Sure.
I can go from there.
Mr. Forte, you want to give a kind of a two-minute? So we're going to do the presentation Wednesday and next Wednesday. There'll be a full presentation of this. Our district over the years, it's hard to just jump to it. I have to explain a lot. So our district over the years has been gone up and down in terms of enrollment. One of our issues in this district, something we've been grappling with for twenty-plus years, is space and the use of substandard space. Our district, for the first time, this, was this year or eighteen nineteen? Eighteen nineteen was the first year in almost twenty years that we weren't utilizing substandard space. Substandard space is when you're using like a trailer, or you're using a hallway, or a closet for instruction. So we're able to reconfigure some of our rooms in our district within the footprint. We weren't able to go outside the footprint. That's, that required a referendum, and it's a lot more costly to do an addition. We did, we did look at that in addition. So now we're at a point where our middle school population, because the bubbles have gone through, will start to decline a little bit, but our elementary population is rising. This is the first year, this is the first, this is the largest kindergarten class we've had in ten years. So we've already started this year, off this year by reclaiming one special room, the music room at River View, for instruction. So we're already going down the path of having to take back and go back into substandard space by putting kids, you know, art on a cart, music on a cart, something like that. But there's only so much you can do, I think. Once you get to a point where, you know, there's no more art rooms to take, there's just no more classrooms, and it drives up the class sizes. We have a board approved policy that gives recommendations on class sizes. Doesn't say it's written stone. It just says recommendations on class sizes. So we're at the point now at River View this year where we have class sizes right at that next.
Okay.
So one of the things I also have to explain to you is that our district, just like every other school district in New Jersey, has to work within a two percent tax levy cap on the recurrent costs. Because the state passed a law a few years ago. If you want to go beyond the two percent tax levy cap, there are ways. But one of the main ways is to go to a public for a question. And you ask the public for a special question. If the question fails, you can no longer do it. So you can't like make them, figure out a way to pay for it once the question fails. It's over. Not only that, it takes about a year to figure out how to get the question going. It's a pretty long process. And you do it, you really only want to do it in November because if you don't do it in November, you have to pay for the election ticket. So there's a lot of moving parts, and I'll explain more of that on Wednesday. So now, fast forward a little bit, we have a, we do have some area of concern with our class sizes. We have no available rooms, and we're already starting to take away some rooms from other things. At the same time, St. Mary's closed, and the diocese has been interested. The diocese had the power, so they've been interested in renting it to us. We met, we talked about it, went back and forth, and we've come up with at least the ultimate is not set in stone. These are just, it's still in a draft state. It's not finalized. But the cost is approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for five years.
And that's really the two percent tax levy?
Well, that's five years. So you got, the way we worked it out, it will work.
Hundred fifty thousand a year?
What was that?
Hundred fifty thousand a year.
Yes, it's a little, it grows too. So for us, we always want it to grow. You don't want to start off at the highest level because then growing is better than slowing.
What's stopping us from building an addition?
So to build an addition, we have had our architects have got it. So let me start over at the beginning. We have, we have a piece of property on the south side of town, about thirty acres, that we looked at, that we could build a school on. The cost is, the estimate then was thirty million. It's probably closer to thirty-five million. There's some issues with that property. It's thirty acres, about ten. It is swamped lands and not builtable. So it's still okay for an elementary school. The other thing we looked at was doing an addition at Lakeview. But the consensus, including, you know, especially for me too, I would not want to recommend an addition on a school that already is very large. It holds, it can hold up to eight hundred kids. It's just a large elementary school to get. So putting an addition on that school and making it even bigger wasn't really a good option. The last option was building an addition at River View. Now, River View has some challenges. One of the challenges is the first floor was not built to, to house a second floor. Meaning it's not, it's not structurally sound enough to put a second floor on. So there's a lot more engineering.
My wife asked that question, by the way.
Yeah, that's a pretty large process for us. Not that we couldn't do it. Almost anything is possible, but you have to frame around it. It's really complicated. The other thing that's problematic in River View is it's in a flood zone. So going out the back for a first level addition is not feasible because it's in a flood zone.
With an activation?
So it can, what we can do is we can go out the front, but we would have to take away the parking lot. And then we probably could reclaim some of the parking lot by the front lawn. This is what our architect said. The other option, which we thought maybe would be better, would be to go out the back on stilts, like on a three-story addition, with this first story might be like parked underneath with, you know... of underneath with, with, you know, pillars and then, and then two stories of bottom. The advantage of doing that too would be we tie in with the rest of the second floor at River View and then make it handicapped accessible, which it is not at this point. So it's an advantage then. The downside to that is the, the addition with some other things involved, with there's, there's another, there's two, you have to build another small addition to hold, to hold the elevator, just want to put away in the back, which wouldn't really be a good idea. It's approximately ten million dollars. And for ten million dollars, we'd probably get somewhere between eight, ten classroom level. Plus the elevator and some other, we also have some other things we would put into the referendum.
Would that be enough room?
No, I mean, it's enough, it's enough to handle what we have now, but it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be enough for a lot of expansion, like large growth. So the, the room, the building across the street at St. Mary's property, which we don't have a real name for yet, but we're, right now I'm calling it East and West River View, would be, would be something that we could do without referendum. We're able to use our reserves, so there's a difference between money we have in reserves that we can use on facilities, but you can't use any of that money for recurring costs. You can't hire a teacher with it, you can't, you know, even pay for security if it's a recurring cost. You can only pay for capital improvements like repairs or maintenance, stuff, anything like that, like if, say you needed a roof, you could pay for it with that. So, so some of the work we would, we would have to do, we do have to do some work there. It's not perfectly ready for us.
So it's St. Mary's?
Yeah, there's about three to four hundred thousand dollars worth of work. The positive side of that was I did negotiate with the, with the diocese that we would get a credit back on the, between three and four hundred thousand dollars, a hundred and fifty thousand. So each, for the first three years, we would get fifty thousand dollars back. I don't know how it's gonna work exactly, whether or not it's taking off the top or it's remade, but it'll, it'll reduce the lease upfront, which helps us because we have the limit within the two percent cap.
So we would be netting, net paying then six hundred thousand dollars in the first five years?
No, the, the first figures I told you were after the credit, so it's about eight hundred, eight hundred ninety thousand with a hundred and fifty thousand dollar credit.
So seven hundred and fifty thousand?
Yeah.
Net. Net, five years. So have we looked at financing for the ten million for the addition?
Well, the first step is to go for a referendum.
Could you have numbers though on financing, how would that look like?
Yeah, I mean, I got, I got our, our financial advisor, like how much does a month?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, how much is a month?
The, the other piece, Steve, well, I can look that up because I know it's in that presentation. Can you just talk about the timeline on referendum too? So the timeline and the construction and what that would all look like for the cast and everybody to?
Would the finance, the, the payment on financing, would it be outside of the two percent? So then you're saying you would have to go into a statement, is that what you're discussing the other timing of that?
Timing of going to referendum? How long does it take to get on the ballot? How long does it take to, once you get that, to get the financing in place? And how long does it take to then get all the permits and everything in line for construction?
And plus the fact that if you're doing an addition on a school, you try to work around school year to the majority of the work in the summer.
Right.
You know, like the, the intrusive work in the summer.
Right. So how long does it take?
So start to finish, an addition, if, if, believe it or not, like we start it right now, it'd probably be about three years. Maybe, maybe, depending on what, you know, like it all depends on when it happens still. If you go for a referendum in November, you're probably not, you're probably not gonna break ground. You're gonna, you're gonna be tight to break ground in that, that following summer, believe it or not, with all the permits required and the D O E approvals and plans.
We work on a field for getting permits per year, right? To redo a field, not to build a new field, to literally redo the field. Between D E P and, and state department and...
Yeah, and throw in the fact that we did have River View in the back, the D E P would have to be involved, like all those things slow it down a lot.
Yeah, it is just, yeah, I understand. So this is a short-term solution, do I think, for the size?
This, this particular solution, in my mind, is a, is a good bridge to another solution or it could be a long-term solution. It could be one or the other. Like in other words, another thing we think about it is it is recession-proof too because in five years, if, if we don't, something happens out there, right, like that happened in the late, you know, twenty, two thousand eight when the housing market crashed and everything, people aren't buying houses like they are right now, and we don't have an increase in students, then we're out of leasing in five years.
I mean, I think the best investment is to finance with this addition on because that ultimately will attract new more residents and increase home prices and do everything that we want, so I think that would be a great thing to consider referendum. What was the process for getting started?
So the first part of a referendum would be to get the architect to come around, do our needs. We kind of already did it, but we would want to update that. We were, we already did it about two years ago, but, but there's been a lot of changes in Denver the last two years, particularly in this area. There's been a lot of turnover, there's a lot more people here than there were, way more than we expected. Like we, we had a demographer come in who uses scientific formulas a lot, but he's been off by a lot because our neighborhood, my neighborhood over here by the school has really turned over and there's a lot more kids basically coming in right from this neighborhood. But, so the first step would be we would go back to our architect, we'd go back to the, to the demographer and we would just have an update what they already did.
Potentially we have this all done by the end of police.
Oh, yeah.
So just to give you an idea too, I just looked up the presentation. So Steve, you have this presentation due on the sixteenth and the twenty-third, correct? So it's on our website under facilities and then presentations, but it's also gonna be presented on the sixteenth and the twenty-third of Mr. Forte. So a addition at River View for ten million dollars, approximately based upon our financial advisors, was about seventy dollars per year for twenty-five, for every year for twenty-five years for the average home in Denver, which is assessed at a value of four hundred and five thousand four hundred dollars.
What is the actual payment per month on the finances?
Oh, I would think we can pull it. You probably have it, you probably, you could probably pull it up.
I might, I do have it, I don't have it on.
Sure. I remember seeing that form, but yeah.
Yeah, because rates aren't good right now, so this would be the time to finance.
So the other, the other, okay, it would probably be at least a year by the time we actually went to finance.
You might probably go to any more, but...
It might, yeah, it does go up now. These were based upon three point six percent interest for twenty-five years. I think the other thing to consider too is, you know, like Steve had said at the beginning, we've looked and I've looked at these, these figures over, I think it was a fifty-year period on enrollment, and it is a very cyclical pattern. I can't tell you what the future's ever gonna hold. It's like a financial advisor, I can tell you, past performance doesn't indicate future performance, but it is cyclical, so I think we're on the upswing. There's certainly some concerns over additional high-density homes in Denver being built, particularly at least two projects that have already been approved or rezoned, I should say, by the zoning board that could increase student population. However, they're not starting to be built yet, so we don't know definitively, they definitely will or will not come. And also, like I said, the cyclical pattern, I think the other concern is we build an addition and one of two things happens, either number one, like you indicated, it's not big enough. So we're, we're now stuck with, we just spent ten million dollars and I hear the stories and I wasn't around then, that the day they opened up the Sea Wing at Lakeview, it was not big enough. So, you know, that's a concern. You spent ten million dollars, that's, that's a bummer. And then, or vice versa, the population declines and now you've got empty classrooms when you just spent ten million dollars. So those are some of the things, not, none, none of these are exclusive answers to why we would do certain things, there's positives and negatives, and Steve will talk about them in the presentation on, on each one of these ideas. And I think that those are just some of the things that we certainly look at in long term.
I'm, yeah, to actually, to, to allocate it in the long term, so is twenty-five years, like is that a common term for something? Can we go further out? Because we're talking about...
Twenty-five is a common number.
It's common, you go short.
Sure. I never heard a longer, you go short. I've seen ten, I've seen fifteen, I've seen twenty, twenty-five. I've never seen more than twenty-five, maybe you can.
If you can, I mean, then why not? It's a lower number of increases taxes and it's a long-term investment anyway.
I think it's, I think it's probably similar to the way you look at a mortgage for your house. You might go to a forty-year mortgage, but your interest rate goes up. So your question is, do you want the interest rate to go up?
I think residents probably, probably want a lower payment. Lower payment, I would think.
Oh, another thing to say, so we, at this particular, this, this year we have, no longer have debt. So we're one of the oldest districts that paid off all their debt. We've been, we've been doing our projects and maintaining our facilities without calling out to the public for additional, to take on debt.
What is the private loan or how, who, whom should we see the financing from?
It actually goes to a bid, you have to pay the bid on.
It's private. It's not the state.
Private lenders.
And then, I mean, that's another thing to, Steve brings up a really good point, that this board, at least since I've been on it for five years now, and I think for a while now, has tried very hard to say, hey, if we need a roof, we're not gonna go to put out, float a loan for a roof. If we need a security vestibule, we're not gonna float a loan for that. If we need the gym floor reed, we're not gonna float a loan for that. It's kind of like, I look at it kind of like my own personal bank account. If I need a roof in five years, I say, okay, the roof's gonna cost me twenty thousand dollars, I need to save for the next five years because I want to go out, I don't have to, you know, pu, uh, put out a loan out for it. I will tell you, that's not the way that most school districts perform in New Jersey, absolutely not. Most school districts, including, I would venture to guess, almost every single district that surrounds us is in debt in some point and all the fall number for boilers, roofs, roofs are very, very typical, or, you know, additions for gyms and security vestibles. I mean, literally the one right next door, if you go westbound here, literally just loaded, I think, ten million dollars for roofs and security vestibles and a few other kind of maintenance stuff that we have all paid for out of our pocket.
I was gonna say, just the fact that we're debt-free says enough, I mean, that's keep really, really great. So, yeah, that's all I have.
Great, thank you.
So I'm sorry, the next steps for bringing it to referendum? You'll bring it up in, in the following...
Yeah, so the first step is we're gonna work on this lease with St. Mary's. We're gonna get that straightened out. If, if we still see an uptake and the, and the, and the board and the public are interested in going out to a referendum to try and correct this and create actual space that we own, that would be something that would probably happen after the first year and a half. That would give us enough time to be ready to go into a, into a, into the referendum and an addition. We, we can only do a five-year lease, that's why this lease is only five years, the state will even allow you to do five, but we have options to extend it.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks for your question.
Anyone else? Steve, no one else come up? I'm gonna close our first little public comment section at eight-thirty, we're gonna move on to, so good.
We have some, we have staff that will share that if anybody, if board members have a question prior to Wednesday, you can ask them that way, on stage.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you. Thank you. Anybody have any questions for our wonderful River View staff? Please? I'd actually like to ask the River View staff a date films about the St. Mary's expansion and how that might affect their daily operations. If they're willing to share.
Just answer it from here. Thanks for that question. When we heard about all that, we met with a few of our staff members. We actually had a committee called the RV Expansion Committee, just for any staff member who would be interested. And I talked to the board in fifth grade because that's preliminary, I didn't know who's gonna be involved. And everyone has a sense of excitement because it does leave our spacing concern. For the fifth grade teachers, they get a whole wave, so they're excited about the targeted teaching they can do and what they can do with students. The other teachers are glad not to have Arc and a cart or any other specialist down the container. As a whole school, it gives us a little bit more breathing space to be able to not have to have any more classrooms that are shared or open, other possibilities where we have some classrooms that are tight and be able to get them a regular-sized classroom. So overall, I think there's, you know, nervousness with it, they're hoping to make the right decisions, we're constantly talking about it, but I think there's overall just a nice sense of excitement in there all and we're in with the idea, we think it makes sense. We think it's the best solution so far. Would you agree? There you go, talk to the whole team.
We also have our director's specialized here. Special ed, if you want. Maybe the same question for you, Grace.
Well, I mean, I feel the same way that just throughout this, I, you know, it's definitely a productive thing for River View, I think they want to have a lot more options down. I think the, the impact on a lot of the shared spaces is what I see as an impact. It may also help some of our specialized programs to not be in so many tight spaces. We're looking at options right now to see if we can open that up more and improve their experience, so that's what I'm excited about.
One of the, one of the parents in our last meeting voiced a concern about the, the wonderful culture that's been cultivated up to this point and they saw a significant impact or disruption to that where, for example, the fifth graders would no longer be able to sort of usher the kindergartners around and they, a lot of parents loved that future or that sort of, that, that environment and they were really concerned that that would be one of the significant changes that, that they might see. So, like from the kindergartners to the fifth grader, so do you, do you feel that you could accommodate that and work that through even with weather conditions and snow and everything else that might throw a wrench into your planning phase?
Well, I, we had that same conversation, I think Dr. Collins said it best, it's that the culture is created by people who had a building and I think that's just so well-stated. We put all of our people in understanding what our mission is, what does it mean to be River View, whether that's housed in a separate building or together, we're just there to be one school. But I listened to the board meeting and I thought that that's great that the parents feel so important, the fifth grade helpers, and talk with transportation and considered a way that we could still have the students come off that bus so they would be driven to the annex first. So the fourth and fifth grade students that are, actually it's preliminary fifth grade, that are kindergarten, of course, would get off, help the kindergarten and then be walked over because I think that's an exciting thing to do. Also, we're really working on leadership throughout the whole grade levels, there are other jobs that we're posting out there that we're doing with master education classes, so they're not only gonna be those options, but I think just as we are as River View, leadership throughout has to happen and we wouldn't take anything of that away from it. We're looking through how throughout the day we continue to come through the main, you know, everyone's together and then separated and exciting to go back and forth. So my biggest goal and my biggest concern is that we continue to be River View, who we are, what we are, continuing to perform in. So I think that would be everyone's vision and mission, but I think it's a very legitimate concern. I'm really excited to talk to them, listen to what parents concerned about, to make sure we address them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for the work you've already put in and thank you for continuing to make sure that that happens to a lot of people, so thank you.
Thank you so much. Kind of forget my family.
Six thirty, right?
Six thirty.
I think there was six.
I'll be that four.
Thank you for inviting, Mr. Forte, I appreciate it. Thank you for asking questions. All kind of thing, man. All right, we are gonna move on to our agenda. Let's see, Mr. Collins, we're through old business, no action meeting.
So at the next meeting, we are going to be reviewing and voting on the Traders' School Money Report, the Secretary Report of September twenty-nineteen. We're also going to be reviewing and voting on education reports, the Report of Student Law for September twenty-nineteen, the Report of the Health Office for September twenty-nineteen, and the twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen HIV self-assessment. We will also be going to approve the minutes, the work, I'm sorry, the work, regular session meeting and executive session one and two for September sixteen.
Any, any questions, comments on old business or acting? So now we'll move on, Mr. Louis, we're moving through personnel action to be taken this evening.
Let me drag this thing over here. Okay, I would like to move items one through four as a block. We have item one, we've got five new hires, we have, we're retroactively approving kindergarten orientation, in-service days and back-to-school night, there are two resignations, fall conferences, peer buddy coordinators, dyslexia training and workshop, and a workshop. Item two is approving substitutes. Item three is approving miracle number four for Dr. Collins from eighteen nineteen school year. Congratulations, by the way. Congratulations, by the way. And, uh, approve, approving, uh, a, a family medical leave, uh, we started on September twenty.
Any questions, comments on personnel?
I would just add my congratulations, Sandy, on the, uh, future reading. I got to see her again, the work that we're doing, um, from our end of the staff, uh, so, it's going to be super, so thank you.
Any other questions, guys? Seeing on roll call, please.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Lor?
Yes.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Mrs. Cool?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Capello, would you mind moving through instruction program action meeting?
Certainly, certainly. If there are no objections, I would like to move number one under instruction programming, to approve Dr. Dr. Rebecca Sholn, the American Association, to provide workshop best practices to his students on October fourteenth, at, at Boston College, Michigan.
Thank you, Mr. Poriz. Any questions?
Do you see someone who'd be happy to?
Answer.
How do you, uh?
It was great.
See, no more questions, roll call, please.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Lor?
Yes.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Mrs. Cool?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Cass, would you mind moving us through findings, one item, please?
We have, well, one item to be approved. We approve of Walgreens Pharmacy to provide food shop clinics for staff members during the nineteen twenty school year at the cost of the district.
Second. Mr. Lu?
Can I ask one question on that? Have we considered utilizing, um, a local business, um, for providing food shops? I guess they wouldn't offer it for free.
It's not for people, but they take whatever insurance, but they reach out to us, while they're workers, yeah. Okay, so, and they do, they do a great job, because they don't, there's no charge to, to show, whatever insurance it is, it's, it's. Okay, so it's pretty good, it's a pretty good program. And it's, we did it like two years ago.
Yeah, yeah, I remember seeing it.
And the reason why we have it, I used to come up, it's like right after and afterward, we wanted to give them a chance to, uh, get it on, so I feel about.
Being a pharmacist myself, and knowing how hard it is to run a pharmacy, I was wondering, uh, if any of the local pharmacies, if they were interested, they could easily ask, uh, if they're interested in.
A lot of, to, like, ours have, uh, they have, they're all get that person.
Yeah, uh, pharmacists are licensed to give injections.
Okay.
Yeah, and, um, they would probably take all the major insurance companies, so if we can support a local pharmacy.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, do you have no, there's no?
Uh, we're not connected to Walgreens, just a neighbor, like, of your stuff.
Sure, okay.
Do we do this on site, see if we can make, uh?
We do.
So that they, they do it in a plant?
It comes about, you know, for like three hours, and anybody who wants to go, goes. It's gonna be my first time doing it, and I always get it with my physical. She's not working out, she's just, uh, I'll see.
Have we ever had food shops, but, you know, so we can require food shops?
No, we can't require. We'll be recommended, if you just offer it, I'll just go.
Yeah, that's a, it's a good point, this is not required for our staff members. This is just a service made available, more convenient, yes.
I think we have to, uh, thirty people, so we have more than that.
Any other questions? Seeing on roll call, please.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Lor?
Yes.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Mrs. Cool?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Wagner, be now, Mr. Cass, would you mind moving us through operations?
Okay, uh, we have one item under building and grounds that we approve the submission of Valley Middle School Athletic Field. Approve this project to the New Jersey Department of Education for approval.
Second. See, I called it, I meant to ask you, I sent this out to you earlier, but did we include conduit or whatever? Or not? Remember, we talked about, uh, future, future, eventually.
No, we did not, it's not included in this, but this is just the DOA, we have, something we can do before.
That's not, they probably don't even need to approve that, I would assume, right? This is just the project.
Right, this is saying, this is, this is basically saying it's not going to interfere with education, but it does have to do with the education process.
Okay, got it. And then, can you just remind me where we are in this process? I feel like, I mentioned it earlier, I feel like this one's been.
Yeah, so, this was, we, we kind of figured, because of the fact that it's in a wetland area. So, first step is going and getting the Morris County Soil Conservation something, it's good, district approval. Then the DDP, then NJDOA, then the town. So we are, this is the DOA. Once we, so we have the DOA, the next one is go to town. Town should be two, because the really only permits that we really need are for plumbing for the, uh, irrigation, it's not like there's.
Correct.
And then, we, we still look to go out to bid, uh, in the winter, start this project, for sure.
I was thinking about that the other day, that, can you imagine if we try and put a bus garage where our bus garage is now?
Yeah, never had.
Would have put a bus garage right out there. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Lor?
Yes.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Mrs. Cool?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Lu, would you mind moving us through personnel, no action meeting?
Certainly, next meeting in two weeks, we will be voting on items one through five. We have, uh, we have a rescinding motion from the previous meeting, uh, to redo as a slightly different motion. Uh, we've got several student supports, several trainings, uh, item two, with the students from Fairleigh, Dickinson, Montclair, Morris County School of Technology, and County College of Morris to observe in, in those schools. Uh, and two family medical leave acts, sorry, yes, and unpaid leave passes.
Question for personnel or next meeting? Seeing on, Mr. Capello, would you mind moving us through instruction program, no action meeting?
Certainly, at the next meeting, uh, we will be reviewing and voting on items one and two, uh, including listed future requests, and also, uh, resources. Currently, I have three, one for speech therapy, this one for teacher, and one for team.
Any questions? Seeing none, uh, Mrs. Cool, would you mind moving us through policy revisions for the next meeting?
I'll do my best, um, so, there's only item one, to, I moved to vote on item one.
Well, we don't need to vote, right?
Oh, sorry, sorry.
You're in.
Okay, well, the adoption, or the adoption, is that?
This is nothing right now.
Yeah, this will be at the next meeting.
Apologies, okay. So at the next meeting, we will move to adopt the following policies or regulations as first or second readings, adoption. Uh, two policies will be for second reading and adoption, number three-two-one-two and four-two-one-two regarding attendance for teaching and support staff. And then we have a bunch of policies that will be for first reading regarding, or sick leave law, teaching staff, where, just the school district reporting responsibilities, use concession or distribution of substances, commercial driver, controlled substances, alcohol, reimbursement of the federal and other grant spend of drugs, student transportation, bus driver, bus aid responsibility, emergency school bus procedures, transportation with special needs students, parent organizations, and media relations.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Do you know, you look like you have a question?
No, I just wanted to refresh the nine-two-one-nine, the PTO.
Okay, good. Any other questions? Mr. Cass, would you mind moving us through finance at our next meeting?
At the next meeting, one of the resolutions is by favor, number one, the bill of fund, which as you all know, we're going to have on. And number two is to approve the, uh, discarding of the books as listed on your agenda. And item number three will to be to accept the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen Comprehensive Annual Financial Audit Report, which had no recommendations, and the audit, audit to the management report on district filings for the year ending June thirtieth, two zero one nine. Number four, approve the, uh, tax budget calendar for the upcoming fiscal year, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. And number five is to approve the grade audit, to complete past trash and current verification background checks for new hires at a cost of thirty-five dollars per application.
Any questions?
Yeah, I had one, um, I don't recall discussing in the finance committee meeting, the grade audit. Maybe I was taking notes, I could hear, um, this will replace what we're using now for, uh, background checks.
Some, some maybe better, um, than that.
We, right now, we're doing it in-house, and this is a more effective way of handling it.
Assigning some more detail to it.
It's letting law pass the trash.
Sort of go down, Mr. Cassis, where I thought he was going to go. I mean, the mandate, obviously, it's a mandate from the state, the pass of trash employment verification. And you all, as you say, agree with the law, but now it's costing us thirty-five dollars per applicant? So when you say applicant, it's a hire. How many, and, and, I'm sorry, I should have asked this before, but approximately how many new hires?
Sixty, I guess, I should. That's a good, like, eight.
Approximately fifty-seven, probably.
That's like, uh, what they call, uh, substitute smalls.
Yeah. Was considered another one of the funding.
Well, I know everybody's busy, so many things, so I'm trying to take care of the, uh, the, the similar one. So, you know, so you wonder if you, uh, the financial aid we get now, which is more of a use again, but, uh, if you took a little of all these, uh, funded mandates that are, you know, if you're having, every, every, every single year, and you pay this, you say now, whatever you have for the rest of the year's hiring, you know, how much money is going to come? The, the bandwidth, I would say, well, they could say, well, it is fine if we really did say, you know, say, hey, but, you know, uh, that percentage is increasing every year, that you're cutting, cutting more out of that, uh, that piece of product from the bandwidth that we used to discuss on the side.
But don't forget, though, the state aid they're giving us is money that we're entitled to. It's not extra money.
That's right.
Like, if they were giving us, if they were giving us money to pay for this, that would be a financial advantage.
Again, it's, you know, it's important, and I will for something like that, if somebody gets this, like, do the background checks. But it costs a lot of money, and it keeps on eating away on, uh, funding for other things that we're doing.
I have a question. Under the current process, uh, it's, the staff would be doing the background checks?
Yes.
Do you have any idea how much time they take per hire?
It's a lot.
Very lengthy process.
Because this is a, because this is a personnel and also a legal matter, we can definitely talk about this more after, in the exact instance, we're not voting on it now, so if you have.
I was just curious time-wise, because I understand that the staff's already paid for, you know, that their salary will decrease after this, but then we're supposed to do other tasks, or?
See, can you send to us kind of a, I guess, a little description? I'm sure they are advertising this, I'm sure they can tell you what they do for it, and give us like a quick, like, this is what the sample looks like. Okay.
Where's the proposal?
Yeah, all right.
So, the marks, get the proposal.
And then, these, uh, these, uh, books that were, that are proposed to be discarded, those were all textbooks, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So I figured it didn't look like a normal read-along.
And it can't be used after two thousand and, so the state won't take her. If there's a free, donate one, and we also use two other services that we try to sell anything to, um, if anyone takes them, then they are, we, the state will. Recycle.
Any other questions? Uh, Mr. Cass, would you mind moving us through operations also?
Sure.
At the next meeting, uh, Ms. Wagner, possibly be again. Uh, for the transportation, we have items A and B. Item A is the, uh, to approve the, uh, sale of two retired school buses, number one seventy-three, one seventy-four, to Roxbury Auto Records, nine hundred dollars each. And item D is to, uh, publish an advertisement, the solicitation for the sale of, uh, one of our pickup trucks, two thousand and four, three fifty XL. Uh, we also have one Tora Z, zero, turn right on lawn mowers, we now have the, uh, lawn mowing done by outsourcing the patch and landscaping, and, uh, the third item is to, uh, sell Trail, Dan Sir Morrison's closed trailer. Uh, we'll just move on to building and grounds, um, that we approve, add away with the dental police department for the upcoming school year. Uh, item B is to approve, and the board would have been the dental township police department, remember, and understanding live street videos sharing for two thousand and nineteen, that is twenty school year. And that's, uh, something we started a year ago, right? Something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, uh, item C is to approve green rise, to provide snowmobile services for the Lakeview parking lot at the permanent rate schedule for the attached hope for the fiscal year two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty, school year.
That would have been the advice that we had, that was my statement.
Yeah, I know. So the catch and landscape, to do the, uh, the, 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 the grounds. You know, rather than wait till the, 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 like I just mentioned, I don't know if you had a chance to see the, uh, finance committee report, but I, I didn't mention at the end that we had a extensive conversation about outsourcing, like, snowmobile services, and this, uh, appears to be a, uh, an opportunity to mitigate some of our stove problems. But we've heard of analysis, we've, we've discussed, uh, western office stove, I think, today, which is not somebody, probably didn't pick up a truck. And, uh, it's, uh, required a lot of maintenance, um, trucks with salt sprays that deteriorate over years from the salt corrosion on the, uh, the navel. You know, the underside gets so rusty, you can't remove the, uh, wet filter, you can't change the oil, you can't make the oil filter off, it's corroded to the, uh, to the bottom of the end, and so, uh, a lot of finance issues along this, this stove plowing. And also, these trucks there, we're, we're financing them, we're leasing them, paying a lot of money, and they really not use that much. So, uh, the outlook for the meeting was that we at least need one of these, these bus garage, has to be filed out, built with, get the buses walking. Um, that maybe we don't need so many pickup trucks, and, uh, you know, maintenance people that use pickup trucks for, for school repairs, we could buy a, no, a, a, more, a, 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 so, so money savings, a lot of, a lot of, so.
What's the, uh, scale of the money saving we're looking at for this, for outsourcing the stove plow?
Right now, we're only going to do one school, review. Review is the most difficult one, because it's a large, that requires large machines to do that kind of stuff. Not, just, no, no, typical pickup truck, it, it, and.
Not just, no, typical pickup truck, and we do use those kind of pickup trucks, load transmission or some other bearings or something like that.
To give you an exact number where we expect to save, I really can't tell you. I would look for an exact number later.
The problem is, you don't get that.
Fifty thousand?
I don't think we're gonna save, I'd like to just break even, actually, and maybe get it done. Another reason is our, some of our personnel has turned over. We used to have some bus drivers that would help with plowing, they're not doing it, they gotta start here. So, one of our custodians also resigned, so we have, we have, who used to do it. Plowing is a little bit more than just a shovel and snow, it's a whole bigger job, and you want somebody that can handle the big trucks. So, we don't even have the guys that we used to have, you know. We're gonna, we'd like to try a one-year, one school, and see how that goes.
If it's a temporary thing, why are we getting rid of the, why are we getting rid of the snowplow?
The one, the one that we're getting rid of is really old.
Oh, okay. I, I thought they were, I thought it was, oh, we're gonna try this and get rid of the equipment to.
Not yet.
Okay.
But we were concerned that we had a truck that's only like three years old, and we had to spend $8,000 there from just a non-use, you know, we don't use. And, and, you know, we, we moved, we do things directly, move trucks from where we store the buses, which is problematic, because it's very bad over there, and it actually created a trace of value in it, Lakeview trying to get them away from the, trying to get away from that mission.
Okay.
Thank you.
Steve, do we talk? So, so my, my concern with outsourcing snowmobile is that we're not in control. So, your decision on opening or closing school could be contingent upon them being able to do it. I know we've got a good relationship with Cashman, he's a town guy, he's done a very great job for landscaping, but if the grass doesn't get cut on Friday, cut on Saturday, if it doesn't come on Saturday, cut on Sunday, whatever. We, we cannot run into a situation where we're like, we're helping schools, and then, oh, by the way, you know, buses can't pull in the parking lot. And if it, have we talked to the town about trying to use something shared services? They're not interested.
If they're not interested, it makes it, you know, you can't guarantee that you do ours, like, on time, or on road to first.
I assume that in our contract with Cashman Landscaping, it's gonna be a significant clause for inability to meet the requirement of when we need it done and all that. I mean, it's gotta, I, I want it extremely tight. This is not landscaping, like I said, if the grass doesn't get cut, the grass is a long big deal. I'm very concerned that we're gonna run into an issue. We've been, it's, it's actually a little surprising that this is coming up, because we're very proud of the fact that we've been able to cook the parking lots, like, there are pictures on Facebook and Twitter, like, whoa, the parking lots are clear, it's great, look how great we've done. To now reverse to a, or shift to a outsource is concerning to me.
You know, we lost two of our guys, and we weren't able to replace them. You know, it's hard to replace, they might, if you replace, replace a guy who works full-time for you to a guy, hey, who only has to go in the stoves. I don't know, I don't have a lot of latitude now. And, and you're right, it, look, what would happen, we'd implod. Our guys would figure it out, they would come together, it may not be like exactly what we want, maybe we run tighter to the schedule than we'd like, you know. Our schools have a half hour delay, so you'd be very easy, yeah, knock out, probably start with eight, because it's largest. But considering the person that we're, that we're going with, I feel very confident. Yeah, well, matters.
In other words, I say that is, we, we have, we have construction projects that always go over, and there's never any consequence for a contractor that goes over like months and months and months. We've seen it year after year after year. I just wanna make sure, and, believe me, I, and I trust this contractor.
Right.
But if this contractor decides, two months from now, hey, I don't wanna be in that business anymore, now we're going to outsource to another contractor that we may and may not know. And just, I get nervous, so we're only gonna be honest with you.
But, but the whole point is being, the whole reason we started doing it is because we had this conversation that we just don't have to be doing.
Yeah, yeah, I understand, I understand.
Like, we could, we could trade together, if we had to, like, say, they didn't do it, right? So we don't have to put a custodian on the truck, which is not great, because they need somebody to show it. But we're also buying another piece of equipment that'll help, we buy a lot of captains to not show it, so.
Yeah.
We have a couple of things on us, it's not exactly the way we typically do it, but.
Got it. The right on mower has not been used in like six years?
No, they use it because we, they drag the fieldwood, they have tools, and they.
Oh, so they do.
Yeah.
Okay.
But not enough.
Yeah. And is the trailer what we used to use for landscaping equipment?
That's what we're storing it right now.
Yeah?
Any other questions on operations? Just wanna make sure I just check, just look at, on the more, on the back, you have, it's a shop.
Yeah, with you know, lawnmower, we're also looking at buying a bobcat, it was in the budget.
Ah, yeah, you should, yeah.
Yep. It was in the budget for this year, we haven't, we haven't gotten out the money yet, I'm just thinking about what's the best piece of equipment. Rather than a truck, it's a pickup truck, it was actually a pickup truck.
You're saying a lawnmower can drive the fields?
No, I don't know, it's all kind of, yeah. We budget for a pickup truck, we have, we have one lawnmower still, and we're gonna get it, instead of getting a pickup truck, we're gonna buy a bobcat, help with plowing and keep maintenance of the field.
You could drag the field up?
Yeah, they have actions for it.
Really?
I think I said the lawnmower is a gear.
Bobcat's the thing that has like a.
This one's probably the utility gear.
That's the thing that, it's made by.
Okay, looks like, okay.
Okay, okay, yeah, 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 that's what I'm thinking of, like.
It's like a little, I have a little utility gear for it.
Be one of those like pickup trucks. Excuse me, excuse me.
All right, any other questions on operations? Let's move on to the good of the cause. Committee reports, I saw they were, a lot of them were sent out in the last couple days, thank you. Anybody have anything else for committee reports? Okay. Correspondence, discussion items, anybody, I'll kind of leave it open to anything, good of the cause. I have a lot.
You have a policy on homework?
Yeah. Policy on homework, yeah.
Yeah, a regular policy.
It's not.
District policy, no?
It's not a policy, we have procedures, it's like, it's right.
I had, every now and then, somebody does, somebody does something to me about. How close the school that, little boss in the road. So, I, I, would the procedures be the same in all, all these schools?
Yes.
Exactly, exactly, so. The situation's forth of my hand, that, every, you know, I want them all on night. A lot of pages of homework, of one course, a project that I was working on incrementally over the days, which was due in the same days, the tests that had to be done, so it seemed like not too much homework activity during the week, and then all of a sudden, several subjects on the same night, so the procedures, you know, sending coordination that, you know, be certain science, science given by subject on different nights, rather than the same night. Or is that something we do want to, is just.
Well, I can, I can definitely get back to on some more information, but I can tell you, we did at one point, went away from the, like, subject of night, because it was then, like, if science is only on Mondays, they're tied to only doing things, it is, this is a, the curriculum, as far as saying you can only do things on that. However, we do have a weekly, well, three times a week meeting, for the grade level to determine what days they're doing their long-term projects. We don't tell them that they can't do, like, a regular math assignment plus a regular spelling assignment or something like that on the same night, the long-term projects assessment should be spread out. So, if that didn't occur, they might talk to you and work to you, tell you that.
No, this is, this, the project was done incrementally, at, at long, was like, you know, it was, you know, pretty, I like these type of projects, I mean, it was a, just, you know, it was due the next day, some fine tuning on that, not a lot, but then it was a test the next day, as well as a lot of homework, a lot of pages.
So I'll definitely reiterate to.
Yeah, I was, I was.
Just remind them, they do have time to meet with that, and that is one of their charges, is to meet every week and go through what's coming up. So there is, it's built into their schedules as well.
Yeah, we, our procedures aren't lower on how it's supposed to be, it's the same for every school, and all the same with the teachers too, you have. Certainly, and she's the role doing it the same way.
Yes.
So, so nobody's getting more or less, so we need to, yes.
Yes, those are, like, it's different, obviously, with the elementaries and the middle school, but both elementaries are the same, and it gets incrementally greater with time, like, the amount of time they, they expected to, might take on that assignment.
Okay, thank you.
And also, when it's posted, has to be posted by one hour after school, on the website.
How do I get my kids bored?
Freckle math.
Freckle math. It is interesting, because this year, I've gotten two or three parents that called me to ask about why their kids don't have any homework or class homework. And I'm lucky, I'm like, it's like, sometimes you can't live with this. Like, some of the time, the questions are like, why do I get so much homework? But some communications are really interesting, because what they're feeling was not complaining they didn't have as much homework, but that they didn't feel connected with what their kids are doing in school, because they didn't have as much homework, which I thought was really interesting, and I encouraged them to talk to the teacher, and check their web, their site, and kind of connect that way, since I, I should actually connect back with that parent to see how it's going. But I love it, it's an interesting look at, reminded me, and I guess I should know more about what my kids are doing on other bases, but, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Cass.
I am the board liaison with the General Green Team Committee. The Green Team is going to, going to try to, I believe it's renew our bronze and silver certification this year. So if there's anybody out there who would like to help with that, please give, give Green Team a yell. We have a website, a new website out now, it's not much at the moment, but it's all our own, so please give us a yell, come on out and help.
Discussion items, we've got board event highlights, so if you recall, this was one of our ways we planned on trying to communicate a little more. So, I think, if okay, I'd like to kind of decide those two items that we plan on putting out there from this meeting.
Oh, is the, I saw like, a little bit of kind of snapshot, maybe.
Link to that reputation, does that sound familiar for you?
And then, the other one would just be maybe a little bit of discussion on the space. Try to keep that message out, that we wanted, we had a member of the community come and speak about it tonight, so I think that'd be it.
Could it be included for the future, I guess, as someone's.
Good.
I mean, I don't wanna make.
Yeah.
You guys know more, hey?
Yep.
Got it. And then the other items on here is the ad hoc committee for culture and climate, so I know we discussed this a little bit over the summer, and we have made progress on it, so just wanted to give a quick update from that perspective. We have our first meeting of that committee this coming Thursday. So, we are getting started with that, that has board members, staff members, and multiple community members from all three of the schools on that committee. So I appreciate Mr. Forte's help in getting that all rolling, and it reemphasizes some of the discussions we had earlier with what we're doing for our community and the district. And thank you, Dr. Colas, she went to a workshop that brought back some really good ideas and perspectives. Appreciate it. Any other movement, please?
I, I'm not directly leading the school district, but I actually have a group called Women in Unity, and the group is really focused on developing a fresh and understanding between people who come, they come very good at math. And this year, we're having the event, a free event on Saturday, November 2nd, from 1 to 4, at the Versity Library. It's titled Breaking Stereotypes, Building Bridges. And our keynote presenter is Dr. Debbie Almontesar. I'm not sure, she's, was in New York City Public Schools System for 25 years, and she's a highly regarded educated educator, author, speaker, and authority on cross-cultural understandings. So she's, she, her career is facilitating teacher and public workshops on cultural diversity, conflict resolution, interfaith coalition building, and youth leadership. So I really invite anybody who's well, who's interested, it's free, you should register, register through the Versity Library, but you don't have to. Like I said, the November 2nd, 1 to 4, and it's, then our website's newjersey, NJ, womeninunity.org. And feel free to holler if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Forte, appreciate that.
I didn't really get a chance to make these points to any gentleman, I was just thinking earlier, during the opening comments. Stephen, I'm sure you will include this on those sessions that you have at the PTA, as well as the afternoon session. But one, one, a couple of points that some folks may not realize is that we, if we don't act quickly on St. Mary's or SMP, we have the potential of losing it to other programs, other educational programs. So that is one of the reasons why this is sort of a high priority for the school, in my opinion. The second thing is that adding on or creating an addition certainly is an outcome or a solution that we are considering, but it's not just the referendum that folks, that folks seem to be focused on. I think, Steve, you mentioned it several times, it's the referendum plus the recurring costs. We have the opportunity to add St. Mary's without a referendum and just the recurring costs. However, if we do want to do an addition and, and also go to referendum, we'll probably need to pose a second question, I think you've mentioned several times, to cover some of those recurring costs in addition to the, to sort of staff.
So I think, what I was referring to was, if you go to school, you definitely have to.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, if you go to addition, there's some additional costs, not quite the amount as they call it, school.
Right.
School, you impress them, you need.
But either way, if we go to St. Mary's, or if we go to addition, we're still gonna have the current costs.
Right.
So the opportunity that we have right now is just the current cost without referendum. And that's sort of a big component for me right now, because why go to a referendum when we have a, albeit a temporary solution, we don't have to take out a loan, we have a solution right presented to us at our doorstep, literally. And, and it just, it, it's, for me, it's just a real brainer, you know, even if it's a bridge towards a longer term solution, which we all agrees that's something that we've considered and will continue considering, especially if any future demographic study shows a potential increase, which I am a big proponent for. I think it's, it's official, I think people know that I am proponent, a proponent for new demographic studies as well, so. And then there was a third point that, of course, just escaped, so, but yeah, those are, those are some of the comments. Oh, and as we're seeing, people do have to watch our YouTube videos, so, I try, yes, that's why I'm making these ones. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cass. And, you know, so I, I think an important point is that if we decide to move forward with the St. Mary's prep building as a five-year lease, I think the, an important point is that we have the ability to then use that space and still do an addition through a referendum down the road, and use the space over there as a, like I said, a bridge to get to a new building, if that's, you know, the future of where the town and the board wants to go, right, Steve, do you agree with that?
Yeah.
And I think the third thing I did remember now is that Mr. Moore suggested, well, if we do have that additional space at St. Mary's, what if, can we now consider taking or tearing down that first, first story portion that is not capable of holding a couple of stories? What if we decide, well, then let's redo that entire first story.
Maybe two, two stories, I think that's what John, Mr. Moore.
Yeah, it was, I actually sent an email out to the, to the B and G committee earlier today. The, as I, as we have been led to believe by the engineering evaluations from, what was it, done, like, 10 or 12 years ago or something like that, the first.
Review?
Yeah.
Review or review?
Probably years ago, yeah.
For you or for...
Twelve years ago, yeah. The first floor isn't strong enough to support a second floor on top of it, so why not take the opportunity, uh, and basically the, the area across the wing, the, I guess it's the north wing of River View, I don't know exactly what we call that, block it off, knock it down, and build two stories there. Figure it's gotta be cheaper than building, uh, building on the pilings of the floodplain because it's already, it's on a built-up piece of land, you don't have to worry about floodplain permits, you don't have to put it on pilings, it'll be easier to put the elevator in because you can do it all as one and to go apart. I figure the main difference in cost would be knocking down and disposing of the old building and as I understand it, there would probably be asbestos root, uh, abatement costs involved in that, but, uh, I mean, I'm a geologist in the environmental industry, we don't have a lot of buildings in the state, we gotta be able to find a contractor that can do it without breaking bank. I don't know if it's a, I don't know if it's possible, I don't know if it's a viable option, but it might be something the B and G committee wants to take a look at. Well, the I E said you can't go on it as, if you could do it anyway, you just don't, you don't frame around it.
Yeah, which is ludicrously expensive.
But on top of it, what, what one problem would do, what you're saying, you're not gonna tie in the other second floor. So the elevator will only work on one side, if you're doing that amount of construction, they're gonna make you make the other side, give you that accessible.
Even though you can, even though it's already, even though you're giving the, one of the second floors a handicapped access?
Well, everything has to be handicapped accessible, so we probably run into some issues with that. That was really the start of why we talked about either going in the front or the back or both. But you're right, there's, you know, there's a lot, a lot of, so we also didn't wanna, uh, we don't wanna spend a lot of money on it right now, you know, because everything we did further than we've already done, really, we didn't come out, give us, you know, price, you know, didn't do nothing, so, for right now, for right now, I think it's good, think about all the different options. We talked about going across the front of the, you know, that, that might tie into, that, that's possible to tie into the second floor. Instead of going to the north wing, going to the front, and then that would somehow tie into the second floor, so you're there, that's what we talked about too. So, yeah, keep all the options open.
I think the other thing to keep in mind is that although, like, we're done, not like even if we were on the board, but there was a significant discussion, obviously, on building on the Nicole Drat property ten years or so ago?
Yes.
And that was because of a increase in enrollment and then subsequent to that, there was a decrease in enrollment, so this was kinda to my point before is that we've seen this cyclical increase and decrease, um, if you, I, I guess the question is retrospectively, you know, would we have needed a new, we're not even looking at a new school now, if there was such a large demand, whatever, probably worth of ten years ago, right, twelve years ago?
Two thousand. Right, I'm sorry, I came on, where, twelve years ago, they, we started it, we had, um, you know, public input, we had meetings with the public and, um, had the, our, your plans going up and everything, and it was a, uh, just not a well-run project, I mean, yeah, we started out a quite sixty million dollar school, a lot of bells and whistles, and, um, that was presented to the public, obviously, you need a referendum and, uh, it wasn't all received by the majority of people, it was just all to the leaders. So it was, it was downsized, um, I mean, we looked at a lot of properties in town, so it wasn't just, you know, the old dry property, we owned that property, so that's the easiest way to go to school, obviously, it's ours, okay, but we looked at the property, we really put the townhouse, so I have more souls now, we looked there, um, we went up to Mary Place, they're all five, it's like, oh, this will swap back here, we looked in there, um, so we look at a number of parcels in town, it's not a lot of big space left in town to build into a school. So the Nicole Dry property, it's ours, it's a good point, uh, then you get into the, uh, the busing, it's, it's almost in worse ways, um, I think this, as Steve mentioned before, you have wiring issues, you have salt issues, you have web lines issues, you have a house there that has an easement from us, the drive was on the, on property that we, we own, so it's, um, and the, the other thing too is, the neighbors weren't happy about having a school built in there anymore. And right now, it's, you know, Christie Gold's face, so, that's, um, it's a hard sell. And if we talk about the ten million dollar addition, we have people coming here advocating for that, um, it's just no guarantee you're gonna have a random group of, of, you know, it might be everybody in the room that was here, I guess we've already put it on the board, but we all may be for it, but, you know, if you have something like that, the taxes are gonna go up, when you have other cost effective solutions, we said St. Mary's is certainly not the best solution, but it's the most cost effective solution there, and it buys us some time, so we've got a five-year timeline, see what happens with all these, uh, compliments coming in with the buster housing, portable housing and all, so you just get a little bit of, uh, a three D room and we can still do it within the life and, right, we don't have any debt, which is really good, very good, we're operating well. I think that, we, we might talk before about, um, if I could call it though, by the way, the St. Mary's, we got two presentations coming up, and I know we videotaped once here, so we should really over-publicize to, uh, the community, uh, two upcoming meetings, and I guess we're not, aren't we taking them?
We are taking them.
All right, we're taking both meetings and push that out there, so, um, you know, people get the facts from, from you, from the school board rather than us going around social media, which sometimes is not actually accurate all the time. You can tell, questions I'm asking at town, still questions come up here, a lot of people are not aware of the amount of time that we've already spent on this, the positives and the negatives to St. Mary's versus something else.
Yeah, I think, you know, it's been out there in the newspaper, you know, even in the newspaper, it's been on private blogs, it's in some magazines, I don't know what I was saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been on a lot of stuff.
And we also sent an email.
Yep.
We're, uh, you know, keep going.
Um, the other thing I would add is, Mr. Kay mentioned, you know, referendum plus, plus the recurring costs, I would, to play a little bit of devil's advocate, the recurring costs with St. Mary's is gonna be higher because of the lease cost, right, naturally?
Sure.
Because I would say, and I'm shooting from the hip a little bit here, Steve, but addition at River View or St. Mary's, our recurring cost of staff and all that stuff is probably pretty close, right?
Well, I would...
Forget about the lease for a second, not including the lease, just staff and that kind of stuff.
Or like, you wouldn't need a custodian to have, right?
Yeah.
There's certain things you don't see...
Probably more at St. Mary's, yeah.
Recurring costs at St. Mary's is a little more than a, yeah, the whole school does, all of it, all of it.
Yeah, that is.
But when you factor the lease and whatever difference it is in terms of recurring costs versus the referendum, how much, how much would the referendum be per year then, um, potentially if we're looking at a ten million dollar referendum?
We have, uh, yeah. It was seventy, sixty-nine dollars per, sixty-nine, thirty-one per average home, which is assessed at a hundred, four hundred and five thousand dollars, as on a ten million dollar addition, right?
So, so would it be safe to say that it would be like four hundred thousand a year to five hundred thousand a year just to pay off one? Or three hundred, three hundred to five hundred thousand dollars a year to pay off?
Yeah, that much is a lot.
Yeah, 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 no, that's fine.
Yeah.
Versus a hundred fifty thousand dollar lease, so, yeah.
I mean, the advantage is, the, the other, you know, the advantage of a referendum building is that there is, and, and right now, today, because who knows in the future what the state does, but right now, there is some state support for some of that referendum cost.
Right.
So, that is an advantage, right? When you look at advantages and disadvantages, that's certainly an advantage. However, that's one where they can change that tomorrow and, I mean, right, maybe we can check into that a little more to Maris, like, is that something that if you were to sign a referendum today for twenty-five years, are they saying for this twenty-five years we're gonna cover forty percent? Or is it year by year? I think it's year by year, and I think that any year they can come in and go, nope, not doing it this year, I think, but maybe a while.
Well, you tell, so, it could be up to forty percent.
Yeah.
But they're gonna look at some of them, say, we don't need to do this, you don't need to do that.
Yeah.
I think twenty-five to twenty-eight percent is more legit, and there have been times during rough financial times, they have a place of chance, moving money around.
But that's also, but that twenty-five, even that twenty-five to twenty-eight percent wouldn't be guaranteed for twenty-five years. In other words, two years from now, they can go, we're not doing that anymore, so, good luck, Daniel. So, I guess, is that sixty-nine, thirty-one taking into account that forty percent or no? That's just straight without...
No, we didn't take it, that's a fair...
Okay. Good. Okay. Any other good to cause questions?
I've got one, I've got one, um, I'm gonna be down at school doors next week for the Valley, that's the PTA meeting on October twenty-third, so I think that the length is appropriate, I don't know if you're ready, so I don't know, I figured it'd be good. Sometimes they have very few, but I guess they have surgery with the pass, so, yeah, I'll tell you that.
This one, they may not have surgery, it's for the pass, it has.
I don't get excited. Pass performance, right?
Exactly. Chick-fil-A today. It's a nice one. Uh, anybody else have anything for the good to cause? Seeing now, we're gonna open our second open public comment section at nine twenty-nine PM, excuse me, if anybody has any comments, you can pop to the microphone, say your name and then just for the record, sign in, we'll be happy to hear any comments whatsoever. Okay, I'm gonna close our second open public comment section at nine twenty-nine PM, and we do have a need for a second executive session. For the public, we will not be voting coming out of our second executive session, we just have some matters to discuss. Mr. Capello, would you mind moving us to the executive?
I've got objections, I move to the meeting executive session, according to section eight, we open the public meeting exact. The purpose of this closed session, we do discuss, uh, negotiation of legal security and personnel issues, minutes of the session will remain available to the public, and the need for confidentiality will never exist.
Section. So, thank you. All favor?
Aye.
Any names? None? Any extensions? None, we're in the executive session at nine thirty PM.
My favorite, right?
Yes.